Welcome to the November 3rd meeting of Placerville City Planning Commission. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Thank you. Mr. Painter, would you give us a roll call?
Chair List.
Here.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
Member Keeney.
Here.
Member Rains.
Here.
Thank you. Um. With a voice. Voice vote. May we have approval of tonight's agenda unless there are corrections?
The city would like to pull that item.
What item? Approval of the agenda?
Of the agenda, yes.
You want to pull approval of the agenda?
Right, it for the purpose of reordering the agenda to have item four heard before item three.
Oh, so you're actually point of order, you're requesting a reordering of the agenda?
That's correct, sir.
So we need a, we need a motion, Mr. Chairman, I think.
Yeah, you could handle both these items, consent calendar, under a separate vote?
Okay. Um.
So a motion to reorder the agenda, moving item four, 339 Main Street Therapy Stores up ahead of 1365 Broadway?
That is, that is what staff's suggesting, yes.
That's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it, there must be a reason for it.
Okay. I think we can do this on a voice vote. Those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, same sign. Alright. Item number two. Please consider the minutes of the October 6th, 2020 meeting. If there are no corrections, is there a motion to approve as published?
So moved. A second.
For a second. Okay, Amy. Second it. We'll do this on a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, now we move into, is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar? And I don't think there is.
Yeah, we, we technically did that.
We did that, that's correct. Items of interest to the public not on tonight's agenda, at this time, members of the public may bring before the planning commission items that are not, not on the agenda. We ask that your comments be held in, to no more than three minutes or less. The commission will listen and take no action on these items at this time. Anyone in the public that would like to speak?
Staff has not seen a hands up at all.
Okay. Communications, Mr. Painter, do you, are there any communications that the commission needs to be made aware?
Well, yes, technically, we have received a lot of public interest in what is now going to be, since item four was moved up to the three spot. Those comments have been provided to you electronically. We have put them into the public record that we've kept for that item, item four, which is the 339 Main Street project. So, we also have additional documents that are coming in probably as we speak, and those will also be made and put into the public record. But after 3:00 PM, we stopped batching them together for your, for dispersal to you, just because of time and getting prepared for this meetings. But we have received them, they are part of the public record.
Okay. Any communications from commissioners to staff?
Well, I got a letter from one of the public that you guys didn't came, it came to me, Adrian Beatty, but I see she also sent the same letter to all of you in the packet. You know, so I, I just, that's just to let you know.
Okay.
And I should let you know.
I want a couple of things before we move on. At our last commission meeting, we took, we talked about the upcoming November 3rd meeting. And this date being Election Day, it was a consensus of the commissioners. Having no idea what was on the agenda, that would, it would be best to go ahead with this meeting. Along with 90 million other Americans who took advantage of early voting. I hope you did also, I'm wearing my sticker, I hope you're wearing yours. If you didn't vote, I hope you will go out and do so even at this hour. When I take a project to the city for a permit. As an applicant, as the applicants did tonight. I like them. I like them on the other side of the counter to take and process as quickly as possible, my application, whatever it may be. I don't want to lose time or money. What we do here tonight, as commissioners, is important to the applicants, and delays of two or three weeks can make a difference in their pocketbook and in the process of their, their project. We, tonight, we will miss maybe an hour or two of watching the returns. And, you know, as I look at it, I don't think there are too many businesses that closed down today for voting, so I'm. We were chastising a couple of the letters about having a meeting tonight, and I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the.
John?
Yes.
You still can't see the results until eight o'clock, and I think we're going to be done by then, so I don't think it is really going to happen for anyone out there in the public that much.
Thank you. Moving on to which, item number four, which is actually item number three.
And then I get this. Yeah.
Somebody's.
Your microphone is live.
Item number three, 339 Main Street Therapy Store, CUP 20-04, SPR 20-04. Mr. Painter, do you have words for us?
I do, however, Director Rivas would like to address the commission and the public regarding our request to continue this item for two weeks. And Pierre is now on the screen, and I'll let him, I'll let him continue.
My apologies, we had an issue with live streaming, we weren't live streaming, but we have corrected that situation, so we're now live on YouTube. So basically, I just want to inform the planning commission that we did receive, we received two, two different kinds of requests. One request was, because it's November 3rd and a very important election night, there were some requests that we basically not hold the meeting. So you do, you would have the option of canceling the meeting if you wish and continuing it. With respect to item, item four, that, that we are now discussing. Staff is, staff has received comments from, from a law firm, an attorney that submitted a lengthy letter of different legal issues that staff would like to review, both internally with staff and our legal counsel. And come back with a response to those comments, and we would come back then with a memorandum to update the staff report if there are any legal issues that we feel may be of concern. So with that, staff is requesting that item four would be continued to a date certain, that would be November 17th. Continuing it for two weeks to the next regular planning commission meeting, to allow us time to digest and respond to the letter from the attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add to that, that staff has reached out to the applicant, and they are, they understand our, our reasoning and rationale for this continuance. So they are, they have been made aware of this request.
Okay. Any comments, your questions from the commission?
This is Michael Friend, I, I have a question, assume you can hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So the question is for staff. So Pierre, it sounds like legal considerations for action on the project to approve or deny are being raised, but would, would any of that impact our deliberations? I mean, if we are, if we're reviewing the project based upon existing ordinance, et cetera. How does, how does this legal opinion potentially impact what we would do? Basically, since I believe that you were provided that, that letter from the attorney, you may have it in your possession, you may or may not have read it. But basically, it was just to allow staff then to respond, so you would get, in two weeks, we would provide you with, with, and, and sort of a, an addendum to the staff report, if you will, via a memorandum, where we would do a legal analysis of those concerns that were raised by the attorney. It is certainly your prerogative to decide whether or not you want to continue the matter. There is a 10-day appeal following whatever decision the commission happens to make. I read numerous letters for and against the project, I don't recall a specific letter from a law firm, can you reveal the name of the law firm? And, and I won't delay this, I just, I'm sorry that I missed it. No, it's from the, it's from Sulari Missouri Law Corporation, the letter is dated October 30th of 2020. Was it a subsequent, was it?
Yeah, that particular letter, comment was received in the latter part of Friday afternoon. So it would have been in the batch of comments that came out to you. They didn't make the packet, obviously, because the packet was prepared on Wednesday.
Right.
So this was the, the, I guess officially the second batch of.
Alright. I don't want to delay this, I thought I had printed out everything subsequent, I, I must have missed that, but that's it, no question, further questions?
Okay, anyone else?
How does this affect our procedure tonight? Will we go ahead with the staff report? Do you want to pull the staff report and any presentation by the project proponent until the, our date certain is our next meeting, I suppose? How do we proceed from here if we approve the continuance that you have requested?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think it would be prudent to do open the public hearing and take in any public testimony of anyone that is online that would like to comment on the project and enclose it. And you can certainly then, after that, take action whether or not to continue the item to your next regular meeting. Okay, Mr. Chairman, to the extent that the staff report is likely to be amended or an addendum added. Right now, I, I think I would vote in favor of staff's request for a continuance.
Okay, how do you feel about opening it up for public?
Oh, no, sure, I, I absolutely do, I'm just, just for folks, I, I presume that, that folks that are going to provide comments tonight will also provide comments subsequent, and so I'm just, you know, maybe to avoid hearing the same comments twice, I'm, I'm just letting people know that I would support the continuance.
Yes.
I've got a question for the group. I, I, as I recall, that the, the reason for the continuance would be for the entire item to be continued.
Yes.
Not to open up the public hearing. In difference to the item applicants for number three, the, the reason to move it is I thought that we were going to continue this rather quickly in order to get to the reordered item number three. It's not to say that I'm not prepared to provide a summary of, of the request, it's, it's just that, that was, that was kind of the purse, purpose and rationale.
I think it's important that the public hear the, the report from staff before they talk, that's the order of the, that's the order of the, of the agenda. And I, I think that what he has to say sometimes changes what they are going to say. If we just go to public comment, I, you know, yeah, we could do that, and, but I don't think we're going to get the, the quality of, of speakers that we would after that, after that report was read.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. I mean, Chairman, just.
I had a comment.
I may, real quick, certainly the commission can take up the action of continuing or not continuing the item. Then you can certainly take any public comment on the item following that action. If there's anybody that wants to comment on, on the continuance.
There are a couple of hands raised in the attendees list.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would support, I, I'd be in favor of, of moving, and I will so move that this item be pulled from the agenda continued to the next meeting of November 17th.
Point of clarification, you're, you're talking about the whole item not having public comment at all?
Yes, no, I, I, I'm talking about, as Pierre just suggested, that we take the vote on the continuance, and then we can hear the public testimony, but we won't, we won't open the staff report or any of that. We'll, we'll, we're going to continue the item, but allow anybody that, that showed up to, to speak to the item, they can go ahead and do that. But just move the item to the 17th. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, can we just clarify, so we are going to hear public comment on this topic, but we're not going to present the staff report under this motion. We're going to hear public input on it, but we're not going to hear from the applicant, and we're not going to hear the staff report, we're just going to listen to public comment, take no action and continue it. I just want to make sure I'm clear on exactly what.
Yes, correct, for the, for the purposes of having a revised staff report, the legal review conducted, and all of the information provided to us at one time, then we can do the, the whole item properly. But in, in deference to the folks that, that are online and want to comment on the item, to go ahead and let them do that.
Are we going to track the commenters from this evening? Typically, when we open this up, we allow a person to speak for three minutes. Or are we just then reverting to more like taking public comment on things that aren't on the agenda, is that our?
I would think it's still three minutes, I would say still three minutes.
And so, will we allow the, the same people to speak again when we open this after, and follow our typical procedure? Staff report, a project presentation by the proponent, and then allow these people to speak again at that time?
I would expect so, yes.
I would recommend that the council take public comment on the continuance.
On the continuance only, not on the project?
Right.
Is that?
I would be more inclined to do that, yeah, because I think opening up the entire public comment without us going into the full hearing, I think, is confusing mentally, and I think would, as Chris had brought up, potentially bring up some conflict with who talks and how many times, and I, my preference would be if we do allow public comment on the topic that we're continuing, that it be completely focused on the continuance.
I'll make that, accept that as a friendly amendment. And so if Barbara would accept that friendly amendment?
I accept.
Okay. Any other comments? Andrew, would you call roll?
Yes, Member Friend.
Aye.
Member Rains.
Aye.
Member Keeney.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Aye.
Chair List.
No. Okay. That passes. It is my understanding now that we are going to open it up for public comment on only the process.
Yes, the continuum.
That may need be, may, may need to be clarified by someone other than me to, to the people out there in the public. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to talk on the process?
There are some hands raised, I see, in the attendees list. Would you like me to allow one to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Jen C., you're now unmuted.
Hello?
Yeah, hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, I lost my connection, I was going to comment on the non-agendized items, I will say on this simply, I mean, mostly just as process. I, I feel like the reason that we got here is, is kind of also sort of process related, I find it confusing. It seems like we have a lot of these situations where the, just the ordinances themselves somehow aren't clear, and, and creates this ambiguity, you know, so where we have, you know, this whole idea tonight, you know, part of how we got here, it seems, is this. I, I guess it, it, you know, it's kind of like we have this ordinance that has certain language, and then we have something that kind of says, but you can have conditional approvals. So, I mean, I guess you can always have variances, but there's just something, some kind of work that seems like it needs to be done to, to back up and make some of these things clearer, so that you don't always have this ambiguity that has to go into this debating. But, so that's sort of just a general high-level comment, I guess, is it at all possible to talk about something not on the agenda tonight? Or did I miss that, I just, I just lost my Zoom.
Yeah.
Missed it.
You missed that one.
Two weeks.
Thank, thank you for your comment. Next.
We, I will now allow Galaxy 20, or S25G to speak?
Go ahead. Galaxy S25G. Are you there?
Galaxy S25G, please unmute yourself.
There they are.
And I'm new to this, so I really do not have any comments, and I pressed too many buttons, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, we have a Ruth that I will allow to talk.
Good evening, yeah, thank you very much, good, good evening, all of you. I just wanted to speak to the wisdom of this delay, I, I certainly appreciate the action that the four of you took to vote for the delay. I think it's a extremely complex and long-range issue, I'm, by the way, Ruth Michelson, I'm a merchant downtown 352 Main Street, I submitted a letter, I don't need to go over that, you can read it. But there are so, so many issues and legalities with this, that I think it was very wise to take the time, as Pierre Rivas has suggested, to really take consideration of the legalities that have been presented. So thank you, thank you for doing that, and I also wanted to say that, at the city council meeting when this was discussed about delaying the meeting for tonight, no one suggested it be delayed two weeks on the onset, what we were asking for was another night of this week, not to vote, of course, we've all voted. It was to watch the returns, and yes, returns from the East Coast are beginning to come in, so I just wanted you to know, we're thinking people, and that is what our thought was, was to ask you to meet on, like, tomorrow night. But thank you very much, and thank you for considering this, and I look forward to the meeting in two weeks to hear the.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There's a raised hand by Scott Soa, I'm going to allow to talk. Go ahead, Scott.
You'll have to unmute, Scott.
Okay, can you hear me now, I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead.
I thought you were unmuting me, anyway, I'd just like to echo the comments of Ruth, thank you very much for the continuance. I'd also like to echo the fact that it's not about voting, it's about paying attention to what's going on, and this is an important issue, and I really appreciate it, and I'll be back in two weeks, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, there's Adrian Beatty, who's raised her hand to talk, I'm going to allow. Go ahead, Adrian.
Hi, I, I just, I just wanted to thank you also, because I have, I'm a merchant on Main Street. I have a shop, and I have customers, and I know local people. That had to work the polls tonight until past eight, 8:30, and I'm just really grateful for this time, because I feel like it's more honest and transparent, it lets the community come together and be really aware of this, and this week is really a crazy time to try to present some local issues in such a, like, nationally tense moment, so I just, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair List, I see no one else raising their hand.
Okay.
As far as attendees or panelists.
Kind of in a.
There's one more that just raised her hand.
Commissioner Lever, you have something to say?
There was another hand raised by Sue, and I'm not sure if you've closed it yet, but.
Sue is back, as, with her hand up.
Okay, I've allowed her to talk. Sue, go ahead.
Thank you for continuing this, we had kind of asked that at the city council, and it's, it's not just the, I mean, I know you're doing it because of legal reasons, but it's almost for the future, it'd be nice not to have it on election night, it's not just about voting, it's about participating in the results, and, and so maybe in the future, we can think about that, but I do appreciate you putting this back a couple of weeks, so that you can do a little bit more on the project, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a Darby Flynn wishing to speak. Go ahead, Darby.
Darby?
Darby, I believe.
I see your photo, but she's, she unmuted, there, you're unmuted.
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Darby.
Can she hear? We have to move on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on. Anyone else? Okay, we're kind of in a new territory here, I think what we're going to do at this point is, we will go ahead and table the rest of the, of item number, the new item number three, and move on to item number four. Which was our old number three. And that is 1365 Broadway, planning application. SPR 85-17-R. Mr. Painter, do you have a staff report for us?
I do, this request is for the soon-to-be El Forastero Mexican food restaurant located at 1365 Broadway. Application is SPR 85-17-R. Tonight's request would amend the master sign plan, which was approved back to, back in 1985, under SPR 85-17. And to orientate yourself where this is located, the site's located at the northwest corner of the intersection of a Broadway and Stell School Road. The applicant is requesting tonight three new internally illuminated signs totaling just over 125 square feet. On page one of staff's report, I summarized the proposed new signage, including lighting dimension and sign area details. There are colored elevations and details that were provided by the applicant's representative, Francisco Sanchez of Paco's Graphics and Signs, and these were done on the bequest of Jose Davila of El Forastero Mexican Food. And again, they are part of Attachment A, the applicant's submittal package. And again, they are part of Attachment A, the applicant's submittal package. I also have them available should we want to discuss them. I can bring them up on the screen. The authority for tonight's request is, is under Site Plan Review Changes in the Placental Zoning Code 1049P as well as the sign regulations and the zoning code under 10417H. As this is a master sign plan and changes to that require planning commission approval. The Site Plan Review Regulations under 1049 contain design criteria specific to signs. That's under subsection G. And those that are relevant to tonight's, to tonight's request can be found on page five of staff's report. On page six of the report are relevant sign regulations under the sign regulations. Again, that's 10417G of City Code. And these include aggregate sign area regulations as well as regulations for pole and wall signs. Staff's analysis resulted in a determination that the request is categorically exempt as a Class 11 exemption under the California Environmental Equality Act in that the request involves on-premise signs that are accessory to the fast food restaurant use on-site. Staff also found that the requested new and existing signs are within the maximum aggregate sign area and the maximum allowable wall sign area that the sign regulations would authorize under code. Staff also found that the materials, colors and finishes have continuity, the signs themselves have continuity with the color scheme of the business and are compatible with each other. The signs are also designed at a scale appropriate for their wall location. Staff also found that the newly internally illuminated wall signs meet the criteria and regulations for having an opaque background so that only the signed copy is visible at night. Staff has conditioned the request to be approved by the commission adding a requirement that a construction permit for all signs authorized by the commission this evening be obtained from the Development Services Department. Requirement that all temporary signs and their support structures or poles, as applicable, be removed within 10 days after the installation of the city-approved and inspected signs. And a requirement that the Wiener Schnitzel sign cabinet that sits atop the pole structure near the northwest corner of the site and the lower cabinet reface, which I've described in the staff report with, they plan to update that, that particular panel, but remove the Wiener Schnitzel cabinet. And that be done within six months of the commission's approval, should they approve the project's request tonight. Staff has provided, as Attachment B of the staff report, the conditions of approval from 1985 to, again, that SPR 85-17 and conditional use permit 85-10. Staff's looking in, looked into those conditions and conditions A, B, C, D, E, and G have been met. Staff recommends that they be eliminated from the site plan review approvals. Staff also recommends that in the case of condition B, it is eliminated in lieu of the 2002 sign regulations, which of course weren't adopted until 17 years after the original approval of this site plan review. And also in lieu of the master sign plan as proposed tonight. Staff recommends approval, suggesting the commission take the actions as provided on page seven. Make the findings that staff's provided on page eight and conditionally approve their request, subject to the conditions as laid out on pages eight and nine. I do see that Mr. Francisco Sanchez, who is a representative for the El Forastero Mexican Food applicant, Mr. Jose Davila, I see him available for, for comment.
Okay, are there any questions from commission to staff?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I've lived in Placerville for 42 years and I've seen that corner go from Wendy's to the Wiener Schnitzel to now. And they are to be complimented. That corner has never looked so fantastic. They've, they've done a lot of work and a lot of money to paint the building. I stopped in the parking lot to assess where the signs were going up on both sides, plus in the, in the corner. And it's just, it improves that corner tremendously. I just want to compliment them.
I would echo Barbara's compliment, comments.
I'll third them and say that I love their grilled tacos. So, I'm very excited that they're coming directly closer to my house, I should say.
Well, I mean, there is a store, if you don't know, my Office Max and the gas station, if you've never tried their food or their business, I recommend it. I think Jimboys is in for a run for their money.
That's where I started, but I'm really excited they're coming closer, so.
Okay. Here from the applicant or representative.
I do have a question for Mr. Painter before we move to the applicant's presentation or comments. I'm a little confused about the condition of approval of B. The Attachment B conditions talks about, letter B talks about signage and it doesn't talk about the retaining wall. So, on page seven, condition, so condition B will just be substituted on the, the table in Attachment B. So, you'll just take out the language about signage and insert language about the retaining walls? Or did I?
I see, I see what you're saying, Chris. On the Attachment BF refers to the retaining walls, but on page seven, it talks about B. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Now, I see it listed on page nine of the staff report as 13A. We talk about retaining walls and the refuse enclosure. I, you know, I'm, I'm clear on what your, what it is you're asking. I just want to make sure that we've got our, we've got our lettering and numbers in order. Is it clear what my concern is?
No, I'm confused.
If I can say, so on page seven, it, under, at the very bottom where it says SPR 8517 in bold and then goes, the conditions are approved in Attachment B, city records and onsite inspections. Conditions A, C, D, E, F, and G have been met and it says, condition B required the materials for retaining walls to be compatible. This will be reworded. But when you go to your Attachment B, the retaining wall reference is in F. And we talked about F multiple times throughout here. So, basically, it seems like on page seven, if you changed that bottom part to say A, B, C, D, E, and G have been met, condition F requires that materials be used for retaining walls. I think that will solve what you're seeing. Am I right, Chris?
Well clarified.
Okay.
Yes, I see it now on F. That's where they're, we're talking about the retaining wall.
Yeah.
So, on the summary table of Attachment B. So, that's what, okay, so it's just a substitution there in that paragraph, as Amy explained.
Yes.
So, it is A, B, C. The condition that was not met was F, but it was listed in, as the original condition of approval. Okay. Very good.
Yeah.
That's, that addresses my concern. It's just a typographical error. Maybe to clarify, it's stated again on page nine of the staff report, 13A, we talk about retaining walls again.
Yeah, I, I see, I see the issue.
Okay.
13 is, is the way you're asking that page seven should be worded. Is that kind of what?
Yeah, that's where the, that's where the typo originated. It's just in that one paragraph. It's the condition F is what talked about the retaining walls. That's right. I
So, the second sentence under the paragraph beginning with SPR 8517 and CUP 8510 to strike the F in that second sentence replace
Add letter B.
Replace B with the letter F under, under the third sentence. Got it.
Yeah, it's a very minor thing. It just threw me as I was looking at the summary table.
Appreciate the housekeeping. Thank you.
Well, if you are going to make an update to the staff report, it does say, even though we are now item four, item four at the top of page one, even though this was
Yeah.
item three. So, I don't know how important that is, but
I don't think we reordered the agenda. I don't think we need to make that change.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to hear from the applicant? Okay, we hear from the applicant.
You're opening the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Don't we normally hear from the applicant first and then the public?
No, we usually open the public hearing, starting with the applicant.
Okay, semantics. Go ahead. We are opening the public hearing and we will start with the applicant, please.
Mr. Sanchez, would you like to speak?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, first of all, I want to say thank you to Andrew. He has been a nice, helpful person. He has been a good coach on the process and I so happy about it because I've been dealing with so many cities and it's really hard. But with Andrew has been so easy and I appreciate that.
Good job, Andrew.
Thank you for the kind words.
So, I don't know, you guys have any questions about the plans?
Or I think just compliments on how well it looks.
Thank you.
I particularly like the red and yellow on the black background. I think it's, it really pops.
Yeah, that was Andrew's suggestion and I think it looks pretty good.
And Andrew, you're just all over this. Great work.
Okay, any other questions for Francisco?
Just that they're doing a good job.
All right, thank you.
All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Bringing it back, then closing the, the public hearing portion and bringing it back to the commission. Any questions, comments? Or is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I will make the motion that we adopt the staff record as part of, or the staff report as part of the public record that we find that the request of the forest is categorically exempt from CEQA and that the findings are as follows in the staff report. And also to conditionally approve SPR 8517R, which lists the, the conditions of approval on the staff report and I think that's the, to approve that as well. I got lost on that last part. Did I get all mall?
Second motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Painter, would you call a roll?
Before I do that, I'm, I'm assuming the motion maker in the second with, by adopting the staff report, the staff report as amended.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your list.
I.
I, Sheriff Lever.
I.
Number Keeney.
I.
Number Raines.
I.
Number Friend.
I.
Okay, the motion passes. Matters from commission and staff. Do you have anything for the commission tonight?
I can give you kind of a little information about what's coming in front of you in two weeks. Obviously, one of those items will be the therapy store application. We have three additional public hearing, hearings scheduled for that date, one of which is 301 Main Street, a request for a place of entertainment. We have a project, I've forgotten, I'm going to have to look back at my board, 519 Placental Drive, the installation of a small cell wireless facility at the back end or the, the back wall of the Speedway gas station. So, that'll be a use permit site plan review. The third public hearing is a request at 965 Thompson Way. A project involving the construction of a new single-family dwelling with an attached accessory dwelling unit. Projects located within the city's Cedar Ravine Historic District. So, that's why it's before you. We also have a fourth item. It's not a public hearing, but it is a general plan consistency request that's been submitted to the city by the county of Eldorado regarding the county's disposal of property that they own along Main Street near the intersection with Bedford. And I know Director Rivas has some announcements too about upcoming city council action on an appeal that's been filed.
Okay, Pierre.
Yes, the city council will be considering two appeals that were made on the planning commission's approval of the demolition of 3095 Cedar Ravine. So, we have a deal filed by Jennifer Chapman and Gail and Pam Rossi. That'll be one, one appeal be, could be considered. And then the other appeal was filed by Kirk Smith.
The same property?
Yes, there are two separate appeals, different issues, two different staff reports will be, the council will take different, will take independent actions on both those filed appeals.
And what day is that appeal going to be heard?
That would be at the next council meeting then on November the 10th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pushing for
You have one, one additional comment to make is that I think it goes without saying, but I just, as a reminder, please save all the materials that have been submitted to you regarding what was item four, which became item three because that information carries forward to the 17th. I will, we will make every effort to, to print everything that we've sent to you today to make it part of that packet. So, I know I sent them electronically to you, but you will get hard copies as part of the, the next agenda packet. It's likely to be, to be very voluminous.
Back to Pierre, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Was there, was there not also an appeal on the cannabis site, the zoning variance?
Yes, there was. Thank you very much for the reminder. The city council at their last meeting did reject the appeal and uphold the approval by the planning commission on the, on this, on the, that was a variance request reducing the setback from the sensitive uses federated church and the school from, I believe it was 250 feet to 189 feet and 190 feet respectively.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? I hereby
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry. We heard from staff, but I actually would like to bring something to staff and commissioner and the public's attention. It might be out of our purview. We live in really, really difficult times and I'm not talking the politics at the moment. I'm talking about the impacts of COVID, financial impacts of COVID and how that may ultimately impact public policy decisions. Specifically, what I have seen in a number of counties, particularly in the Central Valley, are fairgrounds being converted into facilities for the homeless. And, and please don't misunderstand, the homeless problem is a major problem. I think Carolyn Ogden would say it's a wicked problem. And counties, because the fairgrounds aren't being used and, and the 4H and the livestock and all those things aren't happening, counties are beginning to look to fairgrounds to put as a place for the homeless. And, and the unintended result of this, I think, is going to be, it could be the permanent loss of the fairgrounds and everything that goes along with the fairgrounds. And so, I, I want to raise the alarm now and I don't know what the situation is with Eldorado County Fairgrounds and I'm, I'm going to be doing, talking with, with folks. Our homeless problem isn't quite as exacerbated as other areas are, but it could still impact us. And I know everyone's having a difficult year, including our fairgrounds, but I, I just want to raise this awareness that we have to make sure that we don't lose things that we're not going to be able to recover as we continue to work through, through this, this COVID situation. And that's all I had to say and think. And that's all I had to say, and thank you.
Michael, and responsible for that, I'm on the, um, museum commission. And if the fairgrounds were to be converted into a place for homeless. It would put a great deal of stress on the museum itself to protect the properties and the artifacts.
Yeah, so it's, it's certainly relates to a lot of things, so, um, I'm, I'm going to take it as a, as a personal, uh, project to, um. Just to keep an eye on what's happening and, and actually work beyond. The boundaries of El Dorado County. I think it's something that's really important and FFA and everything, everyone else need to get involved with this.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you.
We stand adjourned.